I will now give the floor to Professor Philippe Sands. You have the floor.
Madam President, Members of the Court, it is an honour to appear before you on behalf of Somalia. You've heard from Professor Pele on the legal aspects of Kenya's arguments on acquiescence and related claims. My task is to address the evidence that relates to Kenya's case on acquiescence, on the acts of the parties. Notwithstanding the evidence on the record, Kenya asserts that for more than three decades between 1979 and 2014, it expressly, publicly and consistently claimed a maritime boundary along the parallel of latitude, that this claim was precise and unequivocal, and that Somalia never protested against it. Each of these assertions is wrong as a matter of fact, as the evidence on the record makes clear. Kenya's case on acquiescence is actually constructed on a series of rather obvious factual contradictions. Kenya alleges that the parties have already delimited their maritime boundary along a parallel of latitude. Yet it has repeatedly adopted positions and made numerous formal public statements, including its own written and oral submissions before this court in this court's jurisdictional phase, that reject the existence of any delimited maritime boundary and that explicitly stress the need for delimitation to take place in the future. Moreover, Kenya has also repeatedly acted in a manner that is consistent with an equidistant line and inconsistent with the parallel line that it now claims Somalia has somehow acquiesced in. Kenya's contradictory statements and acts are too numerous to list in a single speech. They are fully set out in our written pleadings. However, a brief review is sufficient to establish the absence of evidence to support Kenya's acquiescence argument, a point that will be apparent to those of you who, as judges, sat in this great hall of justice and listened to Kenya's preliminary objections four and a half years ago. An objective appraisal of the evidence shows that Kenya's case on acquiescence is simply an attempt to rewrite history and the facts. Kenya seeks to avoid the application of the standard three-stage process for maritime delimitation, starting with the construction of a provisional equidistant line. The evidence makes clear that Kenya's case on acquiescence is hopeless. It is contradicted by its legal submissions, by international and domestic instruments, and by public pronouncements. It is unsupported by any evidence on effectivity in the disputed maritime area. It is contradicted by Somalia's conduct, which offers no support whatsoever for the acquiescence argument. So let's begin with a point on which there is happily common ground between the parties, and it's a point that's already been considered by the court. There's no dispute that in 2009 Kenya and Somalia did enter into a memorandum of understanding, the MOU, nor is there a dispute about the terms of that MOU or its legal status. As Kenya stated during the preliminary objection stage, and I quote, "The MOU's terms are plain and unambiguous. Its legally binding nature is equally straightforward." End of quote. And then to take the words of this court, "The MOU is," and I quote, "a valid treaty that is binding on the parties under international law." End of quote. Accordingly, there can be no doubt that insofar as the terms of the MOU address the delimitation of the party's maritime boundary, they bind the parties as a matter of international law. Does that valid and binding treaty, the MOU, support Kenya's claim that the maritime boundary has already been delimited by virtue of Somalia's acquiescence in a consistent and longstanding claim by Kenya? It does not. To the contrary, the MOU expressly records that, and I quote, "The delimitation of the continental shelf between the Republic of Kenya and the Somali Republic has not yet been settled. This unresolved delimitation issue between the two coastal states is to be considered as a maritime dispute." These words, agreed by the parties in 2009, could not be clearer. They are of themselves sufficient to end Kenya's acquiescence argument. The MOU also refers to the delineation of the continental shelf beyond 200 miles without prejudice to the future delimitation of the continental shelf between them. The MOU states, "The delimitation of maritime boundaries in the areas under dispute, including the delimitation of the continental shelf beyond 200 nautical miles, shall be agreed between the two coastal states on the basis of international law after the Commission has concluded its examination of the separate submissions made by each of the two coastal states and made its recommendations." The terms of the MRU are clear and unambiguous. How does Kenya seek to get around their plain meaning? Well, it argues in its rejoinder that in 2009 only delimitation of the continental shelf beyond 200 miles was at issue. This was, if I may suggest, an audacious assertion, given that it was made only after the court had already held that the provisions regarding delimitation in the MOU were concerned with the area of the continental shelf, both within and beyond 200 nautical miles. That's the court's words. Your ruling, this court's ruling, is res judicata. Kenya seems to be asking you to reopen the matter, in effect to rule that you got it wrong, or that you are now entitled to rule differently. With respect, Kenya cannot avoid the conclusion of the court that it is bound by a treaty which expressly acknowledges that, as at 2009, the parties had not delimited their maritime boundary, not within 200 miles, not beyond 200 miles. Kenya's case on acquiescence invites the court to ignore the unambiguous words of a binding international treaty and its own judgment on jurisdiction, and to replace them with their opposites. For Kenya, the words "has not yet been settled" are to be interpreted as meaning "has been settled." For Kenya, the phrase "unresolved delimitation issue" seems to mean a fully resolved delimitation issue. For Kenya, the words "shall be agreed after" in fact mean "has been agreed before." And for Kenya, the words "future delimitation" actually means "past delimitation." This makes the world of Alice look reasonable, a through-the-look-in-glass kind of approach to treaty interpretation, in which language is turned on its head, the facts are inverted, and there is no law. But the contradiction at the heart of Kenya's case is thrown into even sharper relief by the conflicting statements that it has already made to this court. In its rejoinder, Kenya argues that the parties delimited their boundary by acquiescence long before Somalia lodged its claim before the court in 2014. Let's go back to five years ago, during the preliminary objections phase in 2015 and 2016. Then Kenya repeatedly told the court that the parties had expressly agreed that their maritime boundary would be delimited in future by a process of negotiation. Let's look at what Kenya stated in its preliminary, written preliminary objections. Here's what they wrote then. "The parties expressly agreed on a negotiated settlement of their maritime boundary. This was consistent with Kenya's legislation requiring delimitation by agreement with Somalia. It was also consistent with the provisions of UNCLAS." Indeed, Kenya alleged that by filing its application with the court, Somalia had, to use its words, "attempted to circumvent its obligation to negotiate an agreement on delimitation after CLCS review." The conclusion of Kenya's written preliminary objections made Kenya's position crystal clear. This is what Kenya stated. "Somalia is under an obligation to delimit the full extent of its maritime boundary with Kenya, both within and beyond 200 nautical miles. A) Only after the CLCS has made its recommendations concerning establishment of the outer limits of the continental shelf; and B) by means of a negotiated agreement." Kenya expressed its position with equal clarity in its post-hearing written answer to questions posed by Judge Crawford. And I quote, it wrote in response, "Kenya has consistently held the view that A) the MOU remains legally binding upon the parties, and B) the MOU requires a negotiated agreement to be finalised after CLC recommendations." Kenya's attorney general and agent likewise stated that the delimitation of the maritime boundary calls for time until Somalia achieves greater stability. This is because, as the agent put it, standing before this court in September 2016, maritime boundary delimitation between Kenya and Somalia requires sensitive bilateral negotiations. As the court observed in its judgment, Kenya argued that the delineation of the outer limits of the continental shelf beyond 200 miles was a stepping stone toward achieving the objective of reaching a final maritime delimitation by agreement after receipt of the recommendations of the CLCS. In this regard, the court considered that it was, to use its word, unsurprising that at least from the point in time of signing the MOU, any such delimitation would be in the future. Now, one has to assume that when Kenya made those statements in this very courtroom, it did so in the honest belief that what it said to you was true and accurate. And now it has turned on a sixpence and argues the very opposite, as my colleague Professor Pele put it earlier today, invoking a dance among partners, one that has somehow improbably given rise to acquiescence, or a tacit agreement, or an estoppel, or effectivity. Yet during the preliminary objection phase, it was common ground between the parties that the maritime boundary had not been delimited. So what has changed in the intervening four and a half years? Absolutely nothing. The manifest incoherence of Kenya's case on acquiescence is made even more pronounced by the statements it made to the CLCS and the United Nations. In its 2009 submission to the Commission, Kenya referred to what it called the unsettled boundary line between Kenya and Somalia. Kenya's submission also referred to its overlapping maritime claims with Somalia. The submission made in 2009 is manifestly inconsistent with Kenya's claim that at that time any delimitation was already in place, by agreement or by acquiescence. When Kenya presented its submission to the CLCS orally on September 3, 2014, Kenya's attorney general observed, and I use his words, "Kenya had yet to conclude a maritime boundary agreement with Somalia, although negotiations were ongoing." A month later, in a note verbal sent to the Secretary General of the United Nations, that's on the 10/24/2014, Kenya once again referred to the unresolved delimitation, and it stated that Kenya remains committed and continues to pursue more legitimate avenues to have the delimitation of the maritime boundary amicably resolved, most preferably through a bilateral agreement with the Somali Federal Republic. Kenya said nothing about acquiescence, never has, or a tacit agreement. The statements to the Commission could not be clearer in their description of an undelimited maritime boundary and the existence of Kenya's and Somalia's overlapping claims. Kenya's statements during bilateral negotiations with Somalia in 2013 and 2014 do not assist it. Indeed, the very fact that negotiations took place and the absence of any reference to a boundary established by acquiescence during those negotiations is significant, as Professor Pele made clear in his submissions to you on the law. As the ITLOS Special Chamber in Ghana Cote d'Ivoire explained, "The fact that bilateral exchanges and negotiations on the delimitation of a maritime boundary took place between the parties indicates the absence, rather than the existence, of a maritime boundary." The details of the negotiations between Kenya and Somalia make clear that neither side believed there to be a settled boundary, not by acquiescence and not by any other means. In May 2013, the governments of Kenya and Somalia issued a joint statement. They explained that, and I quote, "The two ministers underlined the need to work on a framework of modalities for embarking on maritime demarcation." End of quote. That joint statement is obviously incompatible with Kenya's newfound belief that the maritime boundary had already long since been conclusively delimited. Over the course of the following year, between February and August 2014, the parties met twice and set out their respective positions on the location of the maritime boundary. At no point, at no point during the process, did Kenya make any reference to a boundary established by agreement or acquiescence. On the contrary, during the course of the negotiations, Kenya expressly stated that its proclamation of a parallel line in the EEZ was nothing more than, I quote, "a bid to take a provisional arrangement of a practical nature as provided by international law, while awaiting Somalia to come to the negotiation table." End of quote. Kenya referred to the yet-to-be-concluded Kenya-Somalia boundary. It argued that any proposed delimitation method should be guided by principles of equity, and that, I quote, "In jointly establishing this maritime boundary, the two states are at liberty to opt for a delimitation methodology that guarantees equitable solution." End of quote. None of this is consistent with the position that Kenya now advocates before this court. Kenya's claim that the parties had somehow delimited their maritime boundary through a process of unilateral assertion and acquiescence many years before 2014 is fatally contradicted by the description of the 2014 negotiations contained in Kenya's response to Judge Crawford's question during the preliminary objections phase of this case. In that response, Kenya stated, and I quote, "It should also be noted that, at the first meeting in 2014, the parties considered several options and methods for equitable delimitation, including bisector, perpendicular, median, and parallel of latitude as potential maritime boundaries, and that these methods were considered in regard to all maritime areas in dispute." End of quote. Kenya added, and I quote once more, "There was no commitment or expectation that negotiations would result in an agreed boundary for all maritime areas at once. Given the complex circumstances prevailing between the parties, it was entirely possible that agreements, whether conceived as temporary or permanent components of the boundary regime between Kenya and Somalia, may have initially covered one or more maritime areas, such as the territorial sea or waters within, say, 50 nautical miles off the coast, and with one or more purposes before the conclusion of a comprehensive final agreement. There was and is no pressing need to settle the entire maritime boundary immediately." The contents of this response to Judge Crawford's questions fatally belie Kenya's claim that the parties had already delimited their maritime boundary along a parallel of latitude, and all that remained in 2014 was for them to formalise that delimitation, or that act of acquiescence, in a written agreement. Were Kenya's claims to be true, then it is inconceivable that the bilateral negotiations in 2014 would have discussed a range of very different potential delimitation options for establishing potential maritime boundaries between the parties. And if Kenya were right that by 2014 the parties had somehow conclusively delimited or agreed their maritime boundary, then it would make no sense at all for Kenya to state that as of that date, there was no expectation that negotiations would result in an agreed boundary for all maritime areas at once. Nor would it make any sense for Kenya to refer to the possibility of the parties making temporary agreements in respect of some, but not all, of the maritime areas. Kenya's repeated statements to the judges of this court, to the CLCS, to Somalia itself, that no delimitation had occurred simply cannot be reconciled with the argument that it now puts to you, nor can its own domestic laws. What I have in mind is, for example, Section 4, Paragraph 4 of Kenya's 1989 Maritime Zones Act, for example, which is still in force today and which is referenced in numerous other provisions of Kenyan legislation, and which has been officially notified to the UN Division for Ocean Affairs and the Law of the Sea. Let's take a look at what Section 4, Paragraph 4 actually says. And I quote, "The northern boundary of the exclusive economic zone with Somalia shall be delimited by notice in the Gazette by the minister pursuant to an agreement between Kenya and Somalia on the basis of international law." End of quote. No notice of delimitation has been published in the Gazette or anywhere else. What's more, the language of Section 4.4 of the 1989 Act contrasts markedly with the equivalent provision in Section 4.3 regarding the maritime boundary with Tanzania, which makes express reference to an existing boundary on an easterly latitude. There can be no doubt that Kenya regards Section 4 of its own legislation as an authoritative description of the status of its EEZ boundary with Somalia. Why? Because that legislation was expressly quoted in Kenya's 2009 submission to the CLCS. Kenya has made no attempt to disclaim the existence or validity of that law. Similarly, Kenya's claim that the maritime boundary follows a parallel line in the territorial sea is expressly contradicted by its own Territorial Waters Act of 1972 and the 1989 Act. Section 2 of the 1972 Act provides that the party's territorial sea boundary, and I quote, "shall extend to a median line, every point of which is equidistant from the nearest points on the baselines from which the breadth of the territorial sea of each of the respective states is measured." End of quote. And likewise, Section 3 of the 1989 Act in Kenya provides, and I quote, "On the coastline adjacent to neighbouring states, the breadth of the territorial waters shall extend to every point of which is equidistant from the nearest points on the baselines from which the breadth of the territorial waters of each of respective states is measured." End of quote. These provisions of Kenya's own legislation further undermine Kenya's case on acquiescence. How can Somalia have acquiesced in a maritime boundary consistently asserted by Kenya along a parallel of latitude when Kenya's own national laws speak against the existence of such a boundary? You may well ask yourself that question. A governmental forum convened by the Kenya National Assembly in October 2014 provides a truly revealing insight into Kenya's actual belief about the location and status of the maritime boundary. According to the official report published by the National Assembly, the Director of Kenya's International Boundaries Office, who was actually a member of Kenya's delegation to this court during the hearing of Kenya's preliminary objections, delivered a presentation which was entitled "Kenya's International Boundaries: Legal Challenges Issues." Just like Kenya's position during the bilateral negotiations with Somalia, the Director in his presentation made no reference to the existence of a maritime boundary established through acquiescence. On the contrary, the Director explained that, and I quote, "To date, Kenya's maritime space had not yet been finalised because of claims of it overlapping Somalia's maritime zone." End of quote. She proceeded to inform the meeting of the need to urgently complete the process of defining Kenya's boundaries. That was October 2014, which is just two months after the application in this case had been filed with the court. So it's abundantly clear that Kenya's senior public officials, including those responsible for legal issues on international boundaries, do not believe that a maritime boundary with Somalia had been established through acquiescence. Somalia does not suggest, of course, that the subjective views and beliefs of Kenyan officials are capable of affecting the status of the maritime boundary. But those views do, however, cast light on the credibility of Kenya's argument on acquiescence. The absence of any reference, even en passant, to acquiescence during a multi-day governmental forum on Kenya's maritime boundaries held less than two months after Somalia initiated these proceedings is, we say, highly revealing of the realities of the situation. The absence of any delimitation of the party's maritime boundary is confirmed by others, including the views of other states and of international organisations. I may just give you a couple of examples. In April 2011, the United Nations Security Council issued a resolution which, and I quote, "emphasised the importance of the earliest possible delimitation of Somalia's maritime space in accordance with the Convention." End of quote. And then in July 2013, the United Nations Monitoring Group highlighted the conflict between Somalia and Kenya on, as they put it, "the need to negotiate a mutually acceptable maritime boundary." International organisations have also acted in a manner that confirms the absence of an agreed or acquiesced maritime boundary along the line of parallel. The African Union mission in Somalia has established a maritime zone of intervention off the coast of Somalia, which is, we say, virtually indistinguishable from an equidistant line. Madam President, Members of the Court, this brief summary of the evidence makes it clear beyond any argument that the maritime boundary has not been delimited, and it has not been delimited by acquiescence. And Kenya is well aware that this is the situation. So I turn now to Kenya's claims regarding its alleged effectivity in the disputed area. You've heard already from Professor Pele why Kenya's reliance on those alleged effectivity is wrong as a matter of law. Let me now explain to you why it's also wrong as a matter of fact. In respect of naval patrols, Kenya's countermemorial places much reliance on a supposedly secret map purportedly issued by Kenya in the 1980s. There is no suggestion or evidence that Kenya ever communicated any such secret map to Somalia. In its new evidence filed just ten days ago, Kenya seeks to rely on a memorandum supposedly circulated within the Kenyan Navy in 2004. Again, there is no suggestion that this document was ever communicated to Somalia. Nor is there any documentary evidence of the Kenyan Navy undertaking any patrols up to the parallel line in the decade between the 1975 proclamation and the enactment of the Maritime Zones Act. the Maritime Zones Act in 1989. Instead, Kenya cites logs that purportedly describe the activities of a small handful of Kenyan vessels in 1990 and 1991. What's notable is that those logs do not purport to identify the location of any maritime boundary. Even if they did, it's not in dispute that in the early 1990s Somalia was ravaged by civil war and effective government had all but collapsed. Somalia had no ability to monitor or control its maritime space, and that's a point that Kenya itself has stressed in its written and oral pleadings in this case, and to which I shall return shortly. Incursions that Somalia was powerless to detect or prevent provide no support for Kenya's case. Kenya then relies on diagrams, which we were surprised to see it has recently updated in its new evidence. These are said to show the locations of 22 alleged interceptions of merchant vessels by the Kenyan Navy in a 24-year period between 1990 and 2014, together with the alleged locations of certain naval patrols between 2008 and 2015. This provides no support for Kenya's case. As the map on your screen shows, of the 22 alleged interceptions, you can see from the dots, only four occurred in the disputed maritime area. Two of those four interceptions allegedly occurred in the early 1990s, when Somalia had no effective government, and the other two allegedly occurred between 2008 and 2011, by which time the maritime dispute had already arisen. A further two interceptions occurred north of the parallel line now claimed by Kenya, indicating that the Kenyan Navy undertook interceptions without regard to the existence of any maritime boundary. Second, the significant majority of the points plotted on the diagrams produced by Kenya merely purport to show the transient locations of Kenyan naval vessels in the disputed maritime space after the maritime dispute had arisen. There is, moreover, no suggestion whatsoever that any of those vessels were doing anything other than exercising internationally recognized rights of freedom of navigation and innocent passage, and such activities, as each of you well know, cannot constitute effectiveness. Third, from at least 2012 onwards, patrols and interceptions by the Kenyan Navy occurred under the auspices of the African Union Mission to Somalia pursuant to the authorization of the UN Security Council, which, of course, was expressly premised on full respect for Somalia's sovereignty. Naval patrols pursuant to that multinational peacekeeping mandate cannot, on any view, amount to an exercise of sovereign authority by Kenya in the disputed maritime area. Kenya recognizes the total paucity of its evidence, and last week Kenya made an 11th-hour attempt to bolster its case. What did it do? It wheeled out a witness statement from the former chief of general staff of the Kenyan military, a gentleman who retired about 16 years ago and who somehow claims to be able to recollect the precise location of Kenyan naval patrols as far back as 1972. That is nearly 50 years. This gentleman, who seems to possess an extraordinary memory, his name is Retired General Kibwana, makes no pretense at neutrality. Read his statement carefully, for he expressly advocates for a parallel maritime boundary. His evidence is partisan, it is untested, it is uncorroborated, and it has been produced about a week before the hearings in this litigation. It has no authority, and no weight could be fairly attached to it. Kenya also relies on purported evidence concerning marine scientific research and fisheries activities in the disputed area. Again, that evidence provides no support for Kenya's case. First, the majority of the activities were undertaken by international organizations, not by Kenya, a point Kenya doesn't dispute. Second, with just one exception, Kenya doesn't allege that any of those activities occurred within the disputed area. Activities outside the disputed area plainly are not relevant to the status of the disputed area. Third, Kenya does not claim to have authorized any of those activities. And fourth, even if Kenya had undertaken or authorized such activities within the disputed area, Article 241 of UNCLAS expressly provides that such activities, and I quote, "shall not constitute the legal basis for any claim to any part of the marine environment or its resources." End of quote. And fifth, as Somalia explained in its reply, the specific reports and diagrams cited by Kenya are either ambiguous or do not purport to record the location of the alleged maritime boundary at all. The fallacy of Kenya's actual case, factual case, regarding its alleged effectiveness is perhaps most clearly illustrated by its oil concession practice. Kenya is totally silent on the fact that the evidence makes clear that for more than two decades after the 1979 presidential proclamation, Kenya granted oil concession blocks that consistently respected an equidistant line. This is demonstrated by the maps produced by the oil service companies in 1979. You can see here the 1979 map. In 1982, in 1984, in 1985, in 1994, in 1995, and in 1996. Further, Kenya does not claim that it ever actually licensed oil concessions north of the equidistant line at any time in the 1970s, 80s, or 90s, and Kenya concedes that, and I quote, "Between 1994 and 1996, Kenya licensed blocks along a median line in part of the territorial sea." Kenya's case concerning the alleged effectiveness is further contradicted by its publication of various maps from the early 1990s, which actually depict an equidistant maritime boundary. Let's look at one example, a map from 1980 produced by the Ministry of Agriculture, which clearly shows an equidistant maritime boundary in the territorial sea. In 2003, the Survey of Kenya published an official national atlas on behalf of the government of Kenya. The atlas contained a number of maps which all depicted a southeasterly maritime boundary with Somalia in the territorial sea. By way of example, you can see the map, it's the light blue area on the screen that is now on, it's the area within the red circle, map which was produced by the National Oil Company of Kenya. In addition to the diagonal line in the territorial sea between Kenya and Somalia, the line within the red circle at the bottom of the map corresponds exactly with the agreed Kenya-Tanzania boundary. It's clear, therefore, that this map produced by Kenya's National Oil Company and republished in Kenya's government's official atlas describes where Kenya truly believed at that time the boundary line between it and Somalia lay, and that is a long and equidistant line. It is presumably because of official publications such as these that independent cartographers have also published maps which depict an equidistant maritime boundary between the parties. To give you just one example, a compendium on the maritime boundaries of the Indian Ocean published in 1992 clearly shows an equidistant line in the territorial sea, EEZ and continental shelf. Now, we on the Somalia side do not contend that maps such as these are capable of affecting the location of the maritime boundary as a matter of law, but they do cast important light on the factual credibility of Kenya's claims to have undertaken extensive effectiveness up to a parallel line. As with Kenya's maritime legislation, these materials undermine Kenya's arguments. I turn lastly to Kenya's claim that it was only in 2014 that Somalia first protested against Kenya's parallel line argument, or formally asserted that the boundary should follow an equidistant line. The claim is wrong and unsupported by evidence. What the evidence does show is that for several decades Somalia has considered that the maritime boundary should follow an equidistant line, and it has consistently expressed that view to Kenya. As long ago as 1974, during the third UN Conference on the Law of the Sea, Kenya's representatives observed that Somalia had specified the median line as the dividing line in the territorial sea. Moreover, as the map on the screen shows, in 1978, that is, 36 years before Somalia instituted these proceedings before the court, the government of Somalia offered an oil and gas concession block which followed a southeasterly line that closely resembled an equidistant line for about 100 miles. Ten years later, Somalia enacted the Somali Maritime Law of 1988, which stated that maritime boundary with Kenya is a straight line towards the sea. As Somalia has explained in its written submissions, it's clear that the 1988 law was intended to describe an equidistant boundary line, not a line of parallel. Indeed, the language of a straight line towards the sea clearly describes a line that intersects the coast at a roughly perpendicular angle. It is not apposite to describe a parallel boundary line which intersects the coast at a highly acute angle. The position enshrined in Somalia's legislation was and is consistent with Kenya's own legislation, which expressly refers to the existence of an equidistant boundary in the territorial sea. Somalia's longstanding claim to an equidistant maritime boundary is reflected in various other documents. For example, in 2001, the multinational oil company Total Fina Elf delivered a presentation to the government of Somalia which contained a map depicting Somalia's Joray Oil Concession Block extending up to and bounded, as you can see in the yellow circle, by the equidistant line. This is consistent with the map published over a decade later, showing the Anisom monitoring sectors. The claim that Somalia made no protest until 2014 is a motif that is repeated numerous times throughout Kenya's written pleadings, but it is demonstrably false, and it is directly contradicted by Kenya's own statements to this court. Let's look at what Kenya told the court in its preliminary objections. And I quote, "It was only in 2009 that Somalia first disputed Kenya's 1979 EEZ maritime boundary." End of quote. 2009, Kenya said to you four years ago in this courtroom. Not 2014, not 2014, as it now argues, once again contradicting what it argued in the earlier phase. Somalia protested against the claimed parallel boundary half a decade before 2014. Indeed, Kenya's position to the contrary is not arguable in light of the letter sent by the Prime Minister of Somalia to the Secretary General of the UN on the 19th of August 2009, which stated that the delimitation of the continental shelf between Somalia and Kenya has not yet been settled, which explained that while Kenya claimed a parallel of latitude, Somalia claimed an equidistant line, and which therefore informed the Secretary General that this unresolved limitation issue is to be considered as a maritime dispute. The letter, which I must stress was dated August 2009, went on to make repeated reference to the areas under dispute. The error in Kenya's position is reinforced by the terms of the April 2009 MOU, which described the unresolved limitation issue between the parties as a maritime dispute with no less than 11 references to the dispute or disputed areas. Despite this, Kenya alleges that Somalia did not in fact protest and no maritime boundary dispute existed for another five years after that treaty was signed. And numerous other documents in the public domain contradict Kenya's claim. Articles published by the international news agency Reuters in 2012 refer to the row between Kenya and Somalia over their maritime border and describe how Somalia had accused Kenya of awarding offshore oil and gas exploration blocks illegally because the concessions lie in waters claimed by Somalia. Likewise, the UN Monitoring Group on Somalia devoted a section of its 2013 report to the "conflict between Somalia and Kenya over the maritime boundary." The report described how Somalia had refused to recognize oil licenses granted to multinational companies by Kenya which protrude into waters defined as Somali according to that perpendicular demarcation line, and it noted that Kenya had suspended the concession granted to one operator in 2012, which had failed to fulfill financial commitments while legal uncertainty prevailed over the Kenya-Somalia maritime boundary. As well as ignoring the factual record and contradicting its own pleadings and the terms of a binding treaty to which its party, Kenya disregards the near total disintegration of the Somali state during the two-decade-long civil war that ravaged the country from 1991. It's simply unreal to suggest that during that period Somalia could, and still less should, have consistently protested against Kenya's unilateral proclamations and the handful of undetected activities Kenya allegedly undertook in the disputed maritime area. Indeed, Kenya recognizes that Somalia has only recently begun to emerge from a long period of instability caused by civil war, humanitarian disaster, and widespread terrorism, and that during that period Somalia had no maritime enforcement capacity and was in the midst of a fragile post-conflict transition. Kenya has itself described Somalia's long civil war as the most terrible years of its history. Madam President, there are no reasonable or plausible reasons to doubt the magnitude of Somalia's inability to defend its maritime assets in the 1990s and 2000s. In 2011, the UN Secretary General noted that since 1991, the absence of an effective central government in Somalia meant that there was little or no framework for environmental and natural resource governance in the country. In particular, both the national and regional government lacked implementation and enforcement capacity as a result of enormous challenges, including political instability, absence of research and monitoring capabilities, weak technical capacity, and lack of funding. The complete lack of state control or governance resulted in widespread misuse of Somalia's natural resources. In its submissions before the court, Kenya itself places reliance upon what it describes as Somalia's lack of territorial and maritime enforcement capacity, its manifest inability to control her land and maritime territory, its incapacity to police its coasts, and Somalia's inability to safeguard its waters from piracy and other grave forms of maritime crime. Yet Kenya's case on acquiescence ignores all of this, as well as the facts. While acknowledging the systematic plunder of Somalia's maritime resources, Kenya now seeks to exploit that incapacity and to rewrite history to bolster a hopeless claim to some of Somalia's most important remaining natural assets. Madam President, members of the Court, the factual picture is clear, consistent, and incontrovertible. As well as being wrong in law, as Professor Pele has demonstrated, Kenya's acquiescence argument is totally unsupported by the facts on the record. The argument is contradicted by Kenya's own acts in a variety of international fora, including before this court just four years ago. It's contradicted by the bilateral negotiations with Somalia in the binding treaty between the parties. the parties. It is contradicted, in the words of its own government, and it is contradicted by the terms of its own domestic maritime legislation. Kenya's argument is, if I may use a single word, hopeless, or if I use two words, totally hopeless. Madam President, with thanks for your kind attention, that concludes my submissions on behalf of Somalia, and I invite you to call Professor Miron to the bar.